...meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
As a reminder from the Information Technology Department, please don't save critical or sensitive data on your desktop. Instead, best practices is to save your data to your user allocated home drive. This drive has safeguards preventing data loss. Again, this is an information technology friendly reminder. Did you know the County of El Paso has a YouTube channel? Go to youtube.com and search "The County of El Paso, Texas." There you will find videos highlighting some of the departments within the county. Don't forget to like our videos and subscribe to the channel.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
All county offices will be closed Monday, May 29th in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, May 30th, 2017. Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings. As a reminder from the Information Technology Department, please don't save critical or sensitive data on your desktop. Instead, best practices is to save your data to your user allocated home drive. This drive has safeguards preventing data loss. Again, this is an information technology friendly reminder. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, May 15th, 2017. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Item number three is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is composed of items 3A through 3L. At the request of Commissioner Perez, we would like to pull item 3D for discussion. Are there any other items that members of the Court or the public would like to discuss individually?
Is that B as in Boy or D?
D as in David, Judge.
D as in David, okay. Missures any others to be pulled? Or can we have a motion to approve the remainder of the Consent Agenda, please?
Motion to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Escobar.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 4A, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the week of May 14th through May 20th as National Police Week in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, Caesar. Judge, Commissioners, it gives me a tremendous amount of pride to be able to read this into the record. And I know that there are several law enforcement officers here. I know the sheriff was here. If you all don't mind stepping to the podium while I read the resolution. Thank you for joining us today. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office and all other local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies in El Paso County. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice, including 58 members of law enforcement agencies in El Paso County, including El Paso Police Officer Adrian Arreano, whose end of watch was March 18th, 2015, El Paso Police Officer David Ortiz, whose end of watch was March 14th, 2016, and Constable Robert White, whose end of watch was October 31st, 2015. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, or recognized on the Texas Peace Officers Memorial in Austin, Texas. And whereas the names of 123 brave men and women killed in the line of duty during 2015 will be added to these memorials. And whereas by joint resolution of Congress and signed by President John F. Kennedy on October 1st, 1962, and proclaimed by President Barack Obama, that May 15th is designated as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the week in which May 15th falls, which will be Sunday, May 14th, 2017, through Saturday, May 20th, 2017, as National Peace Officers Week to honor those fallen officers and their families. And now therefore be resolved that Commissioners' Court formally designates May 14th, 2017 through May 20th, 2017, as Police Week in El Paso County, Texas, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. National Police Week, signed this 15th day of May, 2017, by the Honorable Members of Commissioners' Court.
Second. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Escobar.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sheriff, before you speak, I'd like to just bring up an incident that occurred a couple of weeks ago that sort of highlights what your department, what the El Paso Police Department, what constables are able to serve our community. Is that one of the biggest reasons that we are such a safe city? And I'll read this, and also keep in mind, this is alleged. I always have to insert that word, alleged. Officers responded to Gateway East near Hawkins in reference to a missing child. The victim stated she left her two children and her vehicle while she was stopped to shop inside the store. She reported a suspect entered the vehicle and drove from the scene, taking her vehicle and two children without consent. Officers requested assistance from air support and other units to assist in locating the missing vehicle and the children. Constable Deputy Fernando Carrasco was flagged down at Montana and Sioux by some people declaring that a subject was trying to break into their vehicles. Deputy Carrasco found the subject, searched for identification, and recognized an El Paso Police Department investigative unit would be required for assistance. Subsequently, Deputy Carrasco and El Paso Police Officers were advised that the same subject had left a white SUV with two children inside. This is when Deputy Carrasco and officers were able to connect the dots, and the unharmed children were quickly located in the parking lot of a dealership across the street. So I heard somebody say that the deputy was in the right place in the right time, which is correct, but he was doing his job at that location, which made it a lot easier to be able to locate those kids. And I understand the deputy is here. Deputy Carrasco, great job.
Thank you, and good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Richard Wiles, El Paso County Sheriff. Thank you so much for the resolution and for recognizing Deputy Carrasco for his great work that day. Law enforcement has changed over the years, as I'm sure you know, Commissioner Leon, and it's gotten a lot more difficult, clearly. This year has been, or last year actually, has been a testament to the hard work and dedication of law enforcement across the country. We've had several incidents across the nation where law enforcement officers have been targeted and killed or injured, and it's becoming a very dangerous environment, clearly. And on top of that, of course, the environment in our country today is changing, and the expectations from our law enforcement can be murky, as we know with SB 4 passing, what expectations we have for our law enforcement officers who work the field every day. So I certainly do appreciate you taking the time to recognize the work that they do, a very demanding job, a very dangerous job at times, and a job that not many people are willing to do, but those that are willing to do it are needed in our communities to help us all stay safe. And both personally and professionally, I thank each and every one of them for putting on that uniform and getting out in the field and helping to protect me and my family. So thank you very much. I would like to let you know that we are going to have our first annual memorial, a county memorial, at the Sheriff's Headquarters this Thursday, the 18th, at 6:00 p.m. As you're well aware, we dedicated the county law enforcement memorial wall last year, and so every year during Police Week, we intend to ensure that those county officers that gave the ultimate sacrifice to this community are not forgotten. So you're certainly all more than welcome, you and your families. And I'd like to go ahead and see if Constable Bernal would like to say a few words before everybody else introduces themselves. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Constable Hector Bernal. I want to thank you for allowing us, especially recognizing Constable Carrasco. I want to also recognize his wife, Officer Carrasco here from El Paso Police Department. You know, we go out there, especially in the environment that has been lately in the news and everything, but we're lucky to live in a city like El Paso where still officers still respect it and go out there and do their jobs. And sometimes we take it for granted that we live in a city like El Paso. But this little days like this, that really makes it special, and thank you all very much for recognizing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sergeant Carrasco, did you want to say a few words?
I'm Sergeant Carrasco. Commissioner Leon was actually the person that batched me when I started the department. So, and I worked under Sheriff Wiles, but I'm very proud of my husband, and I've looked up to him as a mentor.
Thank you for joining us. Great job, and as the sheriff said, the biggest reason is our population, but our great police law enforcement personnel that we have here in El Paso make such a big difference, and they're so well respected these days. Thank you.
Would each one of you please introduce yourself? And to the audience, let's give them a big round of applause, please.
Sergeant Commander Robert Floated, the El Paso Sheriff's Office.
Sergeant Aaron Nivares, El Paso Sheriff's Office.
Deputy Garcia, Montana Patrol Station, Sheriff's Office.
Deputy Al Villar, El Paso Sheriff's Office, Norwood Station.
Deputy Lara, Clint Station, Sheriff's Office.
Deputy Martin Fernandez, El Paso County Sheriff's Office, assigned to the county courthouse.
Sergeant Rosalyn Carrasco, Sergeant with the El Paso Police Department.
Deputy Ferney Carrasco, with County Constables, Precinct 3.
Deputy Barbara Vivas Jr., from Constable's Office, Precinct 3.
Thank you all so much.
Item number 4B, approve and adopt a resolution designating May 2017 as Mental Health Awareness Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, Judge and fellow Commissioners, and everybody in the public. Thank you all very much. I have the distinct honor of reading this resolution. We have some folks from our Community Services Department, as well from EHN, it looks like. As you come up to the podium, I'll read the resolution. Whereas each year, millions of Americans face the reality of living with a mental health condition, as one in five US adults will experience a mental health condition in their lifetime. And whereas mental health disorders fall along a continuum of severity, with the most serious and disabling conditions affecting 5 to 10 million adults and 3 to 5 million children ages 5 to 17 in the United States. Mental health disorders are the leading cause of a disability in North America. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, the 3rd leading cause of death for people aged 10 to 24, and the 2nd leading cause of death for people aged 15 to 24. And whereas early identification and treatment is of vital importance in getting people the treatment they need early, where recovery is accelerated and the brain is protected from further harm related to the course of illness. And whereas about 70 to 90% of individuals with mental illness saw improvement in their symptoms and quality of life after participating in some form of treatment. And whereas stigma erodes confidence that mental disorders are real and treatable health conditions. By supporting mental health awareness, we can combat an unwarranted sense of hopelessness and dismantle attitudinal, structural, and financial barriers. And now therefore be it resolved by the Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that the month of May 2017 shall be known as Mental Health Awareness Month. Signed this 15th day of May 2017 by Commissioner Carlos Leon, Precinct 1, myself, Precinct 2, Vincent M. Perez, Precinct 3, Andrew R. Hagerty, Precinct 4, and our honorable county judge, Veronica Escobar.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Escobar.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Judge, Commissioners. I'm in Valenzuela, Community Services Department. I want to thank Commissioner Stout for reading this resolution into the record. As you know, mental illness carries with it a real stigma, and there are common misunderstandings about mental health in our society. There is still a large gap between the way mental health and physical health are understood and treated. Diagnosis is poor, and treatment is inconsistent, and there remains stubbornly little education about mental health to this day. This is something that still needs to change. By reading this resolution and recognizing this month as Mental Health Awareness, this body, this court, is making great strides towards breaking down those barriers and reducing that negative stigma that comes with mental illness. I want to thank you for your continued support, and again, for recognizing this month as Mental Health Awareness. I know that I share those feelings with this large group that's here in support of this resolution. I also wanted to invite you all to the annual Mental Health Awareness Walk and Wellness Fair this May 20th, this coming Saturday, at Ascara de Park. It kicks off at 9:00 a.m. with our honorable speaker, Commissioner Stout. And we're going to have a lot of activities, wellness booths, informational activities, as well as some entertainment, and it'll culminate with a commemorative walk around Ascara de Lake. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. A round of applause for the work that they do, please. And I'm assuming there's different organizations represented today, so if each one of you wouldn't mind stating your name and your organization at the podium before we shake your hand, please.
Good morning. I'm Nellie Mendosa. I'm with NAMI El Paso.
Marci Ortiz with NAMI El Paso.
Deandra Valdez with NAMI El Paso.
Marta Chonda with the County of El Paso with BHSS.
Good morning. My name is Wada Lupeyena. I'm with El Paso County Behavioral Health Support Services.
Good morning. I'm Tina Gomez with BHSS.
Good morning. Carlos Mendoza with La Familia del Paso.
Good morning. Melissa Kimberlin with Ammanasad and Atlantis Health Services.
Good morning. Maria Lopez with El Paso County General Assistance.
Good morning. Paloma Espinoza, Atlantis Health Services and Ammanasad Health System.
Good morning, everyone. Israel Dena, Juvenile Probation Department.
Hello. Irving Salazar, Emergent Health Network.
Good morning. Renee Urthalo, Emergent Health Network.
Carlos Marquez, Community Services Department.
Good morning. Yvette Gonzalez, Community Services Department.
Thank you all for the work that you do. We're very grateful.
Item number 4C, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing June 16th, 2017, as the El Paso County Summer Food Program Kickoff Day in El Paso County, Texas.
I have the honor and privilege of reading this resolution. It's a fantastic event, and something that for the entire summer where it makes sure that children have the ability to eat at least one meal a day, and just glad to have the ability to read it. So I'll go ahead and begin. Whereas, the Texas Department of Agriculture, TDA, is committed to address hunger, childhood obesity, and healthy eating for children. And whereas the TDA created the Summer Food Service Program to ensure that children in low-income areas could continue to receive nutritious meals during their summer break. And whereas the Summer Food Service Program operates through sponsor partnerships with parks and recreation, community groups, and public agencies. And whereas again this year, the Anthony Independent School District Nutrition Department will team up with El Paso County Parks and Recreation to serve nutritious meals to children who may not get a daily well-balanced meal. And whereas the Summer Food Program for the past three years has served meals at Gallegos Park, 2014, 11,572 meals, 2015, 25,677 meals, and 2016, 10,201 meals. And whereas meals are served at locations throughout the County of El Paso with no charge to children 18 years and under. The Summer Food Service Program starts in June and ends in August. The meals will be served Monday through Friday from 5:30 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. And whereas this year, the Summer Food Program kickoff event will take place on June 16th at 813 Sixth Street in Anthony, Texas. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court, June 16, 2017, be recognized as the El Paso County Summer Food Program Kickoff Day, signed this 15th day of May, 2017, by this year Commissioners' Court.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Escobar.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. head, Sergeant Carrasco is here to accept the resolution and talk today.
Good morning.
Good morning. First of all, thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I'm going to do a little presentation of what our kickoff is. We did have Candace show up there last year, but hopefully you guys can all be part of it this year. We've been doing the kickoff for the past eight years. This is going to be our ninth. The whole purpose of the kickoff is to advertise our sites, to promote. So this is a little bit what we do. We usually start doing our summer program since January 1st. That's when we start planning. Last year, we had a carnival theme. We usually partner up. Texas Hunger usually helps us out. They donate about $350. With that money, I'm able to purchase some jumping balloons, some water slides for the kids. We are a federal program, so I cannot use my funds for those kind of things, so I have to outreach the community. RVs donate, they donated 60 sandwiches for our volunteers, because we had about 60 volunteers. That's something that we had was our dunking booth. Like I said, it was a carnival theme. I did have some big celebrities, like my principals, some teachers, that where the kids could go up there and be excited.
Take out their frustrations a little bit.
Yeah. This is something that I was able to purchase with some of those funds. We did the Jacob's Ladder since it was a carnival theme. It is a video, but I don't think I'm able to play it. But those are the kids participating. What I did is, in order to, when the kids participated, they received something. I didn't want to just do giveaways. Just give me, give me. I want them to be, to be active. So just by doing the Jacob's Ladder or this little balloon pop, prizes donated ice cream. So we give them something in return if they play the game. Of course, Chico's always there, every year. Last year, Broker Logistics donated $750, and Tri-State gave us $100. For the first time in my past eight years, we have never... For the first time in my past eight years, we have never had a donation, a cash donation. With that money, I was able to purchase some bikes that we did a raffle in the morning. We had close to about 13 bikes. Of course, Wedding Wild's next to us, it's one of our sites, so she always donates about 16 tickets. And last year, she gave us, for the first time, four season tickets. And when we raffle the tickets, we usually raffle a pair of four, so the whole family could go. So a family got four season tickets. Spectrum Paper gave us four Chihuahua tickets as well, so we give them to a family. And Core Adventure Zone, and Bobble's always gives us tons of attractions. Peter Piper's one of our biggest ones. They gave about $1,500 on free ice creams and dinner, buffet, kids' meals. When we give these little raffle tickets, pretty much the whole family is going to eat for free. All they need is just money for tokens. It's, they're all taken care of. And we have more, these are some of the sponsors that were there. We had Cool Smiles giving away free toothbrushes that day and toothpastes. We had O'Reilly's giving away free hats. Starbucks gave us free gift baskets. We even had our NHS, our National Honor Society Kids, they were doing free popcorn. Agri Life gave us away 40 watermelons. We have 40 watermelon plants. And again, Price has gave us 400 sandwiches bar and some juices. Even some of our school board members, they donated some soccer balls. Chief gave me a lot of toys that were left over from the Christmas drop. And one of our mayor's opponents also gave me two bikes. These are some of the games that we did that day. Like I said, we did it old-school carnival theme. Just by the kids, whoever won, I gave them some Wedding Wild tickets. I also did another one with the sack races, where the mom was on one side and their child was on the other side. So both parents and child were involved. There's an army there. Those are some of the games that we did. For sure, this is what we're known for, the water splash. This is the West Valley Fire Department. For the past eight years, they've been there. They do dispatch the kids. As you can see there, there's some kids trying out with the water hose. I wish we could play that video, but that's what it looks like when the kids are getting That's when we do the raffle. Of course, everybody loves that. We had, we fed about 450 kids that day, and I didn't do a head count, but I'd say at least about 600 people were there. That's what it looks like when, towards the end. The event starts at 11:00 and we ended at 3:00. That's about 800. Those are some of our kids. We do face painting. Those are the NHS kids doing some free popcorn for the kids. And that's it, you know? I mean, it's really awesome. Every year, we try to do something different. You guys got to go. I won't spit it out, but our goal is to just make it bigger and bigger. And if you guys could be part of it, that'd be an honor. Mr. Haggerty, we've been with Gallegos for the past three years. We worked with Mr. De Leon last year. And we're also doing one. Just thought I'd spit it out. We're going to do one on...
And I've got to say, sorry to interrupt you, but because of Mr. Carrasco's involvement with Anthony ISD, we were able to feed hundreds of kids over at the Coliseum. Thank you, Brian and James, for helping us out there. And this year, we're partnering up with, as far as Anthony is, we're partnering up with Clint to help us feed a lot of kids this year, and I know we're going to do it again this summer. But Mr. Carrasco, thanks a lot for all the work and your accessibility and your ability to work with us and some of the ideas that we're coming up with.
Thank you, sir. Last year, when I walked into, one of Vince's staff members asked me for help. We came in like in the middle of July, so it was kind of almost late summer. But this year, I was able to talk to Clint ISD, and we bought him on board so they could help out his area on that side of town. So that's something that's never done, has been done in school history with two schools getting united. So for us, for me, I was like, it's awesome to partnering up with the county and Clint ISD. Hopefully, we take care of the whole county side.
Start on the edges and work inward.
Yeah. Real quick, well, we're going to have one on June 13, kickoff here at the county courthouse. If you guys all want to come by as well, we're going to do, is it a press release?
We'll have a press conference.
Press conference?
Yeah.
Press conference. I do have some vendors coming up. For sure, I'll feed the kids, but this year, I call a lot of vendors, so you guys could get samples and the parents, because I'm not allowed to feed the parents. But I have big brands such as Tyson, Advance, Price will be here, Flower Bakery. So you guys can all go ahead and be on the bottom floor to go eat. And also, I want to invite you guys to our luncheon on May 31st. I usually have celebrity servers once a month. I usually have like our police department go serve the kids, our fire department. But I am going to have my last one on May 31st, so if you guys could attend, that'd be an honor. That way, you guys could see the kids. You guys let me know. You guys have my email. I think I emailed you guys, so just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Carrasco?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to echo what Commissioner Leon mentioned and what Commissioner Haggerty has been saying for so long. The work you do is extraordinary. Thank you for everything you do for our kids.
Thank you. Not a problem.
And Brian, thanks for hosting at the Coliseum. Just really, really wonderful what you all do. A round of applause, please, for their work.
Item number 4D, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing May 21, 2017, as the 75th anniversary of the El Paso County Coliseum in El Paso County, Texas.
Again, I have the honor of reading this resolution today. Whereas, the date of May 21, 2017 marks the 75th anniversary of the El Paso County Coliseum. And whereas, the El Paso County Livestock and Agricultural Exhibition Building was first built and established on May 21, 1942, in El Paso, Texas. And whereas, County Judge Joseph McGill and Texas Lieutenant Governor H.L. Winfield officially dedicated and opened the doors at a grand opening celebration at a capacity crowd of 7,000. And whereas, the official cost for architect Percy McGee and contractor R.E. McGee to build the one-of-a-kind exposition building was $321,000 and approved by County Judge McGill and County Commissioners John L. Andres, M. Scarborough, Ray Sherman, and T.M. Reisinger. And whereas, the El Paso County Coliseum was the first major events building in the Southwest and was equated to being practically the same size as Madison Square Garden. Whereas, the El Paso County Coliseum has entertained millions of fans and hosted thousands of performances and events throughout 75 years, as well as celebrating El Paso's rich history and culture. Whereas, it is fitting that we should join in the expression of our pride and appreciation for the many civic and economic benefits that our community has enjoyed over the past 75 years because of the growth and prosperity of the El Paso County Coliseum. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court hereby recognize May 21, 2017, as El Paso County Commissioner's 75th Anniversary. In the county of El Paso, encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating the El Paso County Coliseum's anniversary. Signed this 15th day of May, 2017, by this Commissioners Court.
Second.
And we do have some people from the Force Commission here to talk, so Brian Kennedy.
Commissioner Perez?
After.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Haggerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning. Some things have changed since the Coliseum first opened. A house was $3,500, $900 for a new car, but not exactly where we are now, but we feel like we didn't become an old building, we became a heritage building. Whether it was Elvis, Johnny Cash, Aerosmith, Selena played the Coliseum, Van Halen, Ozzy Osbourne, Juan Gabriel, Enrique Iglesias, Pitbull. Just recently, we had Ariana Grande, and she actually selected the Coliseum as one of the buildings she was going to play because of heritage, especially on the border. And her staff came in and said, "Your reputation precedes you. You're not new, you're not big, but everybody loves playing the Coliseum." So we were really proud to have that green day at the drive-in was just there. This week, the staff is bracing themselves as Disney on Ice starts on Wednesday for all week long. And the Coliseum is in good hands with this staff. I have really the greatest staff in the world, to be very honest. Sorry, guys. Okay, close to the... I'd like to introduce them. Lacy Hernandez, who is our office manager, and who makes sure I end up where I'm supposed to be most days. Isalea Nongaray, who is our ticketing manager, and this week, we'll be losing our mind as she tries to take care of all the nine shows in five days. Rosio Munoz, who is our chief financial officer and handles all the books. Mike McDallas, who is our technical director, always hiding in the back as technical directors have a tendency to do. Everybody knows Margaret Gallardo, who has told me I have to stick to the script and is the one filling your mailboxes with all the things that we do at the Coliseum. And James Smith, I saved him for last but not least, who actually runs the place and lets me take credit when things go well and fixes them when things don't. So I'm really proud of that, and I'm really proud of the anniversary. And I do want to say one thing that's not about Coliseum, but is about the sports end. And I want to publicly thank Betsy Keller, who helped save a huge event that we were working on and ran into some problems. But we're officially announcing that from June 21st to 25th, at the sports park in El Paso, will be the Senior Softball USA Texas State Championship. There will be between 50 and 70 teams, 1,000 players, 4,500 hotel room nights, and an economic impact of approximately $1.6 million to this city and this county. And we ran into a problem at the very end, and I wanted to publicly thank Betsy for stepping in and helping make it work, but I did want to mention that while I was here. And I have an amazing staff.
Thank you so much. Can we give them a great round of applause, please, for the work that they do?
Oh, there's a video. See? Margaret's really in charge.
I did want to say a special thanks to Corey Herman, who could not be here. He's busy recruiting his next championship team. And is on the road, who takes care of the ice rink and running the rhinos. And I was told to remember to say that the year after the minors won the national championship, So thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Have a wonderful day.
Item number 4E, approve and adopt a resolution declaring the month of May, 2017, as International Internal Audit Awareness Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Well, good morning. I have the privilege of reading this into the record. Whereas, internal auditing is a vital part of strengthening organizations and protecting stakeholders of both the public and private sectors. And whereas, internal auditing helps identify and manage the organization's risks and ensure policies, procedures, and controls are in place and working appropriately. And whereas, internal auditing is an increasingly sophisticated and complex activity requiring specialized knowledge, training, and education. And whereas, internal auditing is an established profession led by the internal, I'm sorry, led by the Institute of Internal Auditors with a globally recognized code of ethics and international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing. And whereas, the contribution of internal auditors to the success of organizations and the global economy at large deserves our recognition and commendations. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that the month of May shall be known as International Internal Audit Awareness Month. Signed this 15th day of May, 2017, by the honorable members of Commissioners Court.
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Haggerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. I'm Barbara Franco, the county auditor's first assistant, and I want to thank you and the commissioners for reading this into the record and voting on it. Internal auditing is an independent, objective assurance and consulting activity that's designed to add value and improve an organization's operations. Internal auditors help the county as to accomplish its objectives by bringing a systematic, disciplined approach to evaluate and improve the effectiveness of risk management, control, and governance processes. The role of an internal auditor has expanded to not only being the review of financial activity, but also to assessing performance, detecting and preventing fraud, testing internal controls, and monitoring compliance of county policy and government regulations. In addition to these assurance services, internal auditors are also expected to provide advisory services regarding internal controls, efficiencies, and best practices. By being an informational and resourceful tool, the internal audit department strives to provide both assurance and advisory services that are in compliance with the standards of the Institute of Internal Auditors. The county's internal audit department is constantly evolving to keep pace with the risks, challenges, and changes that are presented by a growing county. They're committed to continually sharpening their skills and knowledge, and all members of the division are currently studying to become certified internal auditors. This will not only assist the internal audit division to reach its full potential, but will also increase their ability to become a greater asset for the county of El Paso. And the manager of the internal audit department is actually out sick today, so I'm stepping in for him. But I want to thank the department. They do an excellent job. And I'd like to thank you, Judge, and the commissioners for your support and this recognition.
Thank you so much, Ms. Carrasco. We really appreciate everything you do. And once we finish shaking their hands, I believe you'd like a photo with the Commissioners Court?
We would. Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, if each one of you will please introduce yourself and then come on up, we'd love to shake your hand, and then we'll take a photo after. Porta Tefoya?
Ruth Bartnall.
Daisy Caballero?
Isad Bellis?
Jadi Medina? El Treviso?
Can we have a round of applause for the work that they do, please?
Isad Bellis.
Jadi Medina.
El Treviso.
Can we have a round of applause for the work that they do, please?
Item number 4F, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the month of May 2017 as Historic Preservation Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning. I'm privileged to read this item into the record as well. Whereas, the preservation of the rich heritage and culture of El Paso County, Texas, has been found to have been influenced over many generations from hundreds of countries worldwide. And whereas, the preservation of the many routes crossing through El Paso, Texas, from the trade routes developed by the native tribes as far back as recorded local history, the most important of the seven royal roads developed by the early Spanish explorers being El Camino Real de Tierra Adentro, followed by the Chihuahua, Butterfield, and Wells Fargo Trails, the Bankhead, Old Spanish Trail, and Lee's Highways through present-day rail and vehicular roadways. And whereas, preservation of El Paso's rich architectural fabric, from pit houses to highrises, demonstrate the most revered architects and builders' talents to adapt to environmental and cultural needs. And whereas, numerous heritage, cultural, and preservation-oriented groups have teamed up to avail themselves for tours, seminars, and lectures every day throughout the month of May. And whereas, El Paso County joins the United States in celebrating the 51st Year of Preservation Month, established during the administration of President Lyndon Baines Johnson. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that we declare the month of May 2017 that it shall be known as Historic Preservation Month, signed this 15th day of May 2017 by the Honorable Members of Commissioners Court.
Second. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Escobar.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm Christian Nill, Heritage Tourism Coordinator with the County Economic Development Department. First of all, I want to thank you very much for this important resolution. It means a great deal for the county. I think that historic preservation is an absolutely critical undertaking in this county, given all the historical treasures that we have. Without effective historic preservation, there would be no heritage tourism to promote. So we need to keep our eye on the ball and continue working hard and devoting the required resources in order to make historic preservation an ongoing reality for the county. I have the privilege of working very closely with the County Historical Commission. I have the commission's chair, Joe Nebhan, here, and a couple others from the commission, and I'll give them a chance to talk in a minute. I just wanted to underscore that we're engaged right now in some really exciting projects in the area of historic preservation. The Casa Ronquillo restoration effort or restoration effort hopefully will be kicking off very soon. We hope to get some state funding to assist in that effort. But the lion's share of that financial commitment is really on the part of the county, and I'm happy to see that the county has earmarked funds for this purpose for this year. And I hope you will continue to do so for every succeeding year, because there's a lot of work to be done. We need funds to do it. While we can always get some grants to help out, there's going to be a required ongoing county commitment for this. And finally, I just wanted to say that I wanted to encourage this court to always stand up for historic preservation wherever historic treasures of our county are threatened. And the threats are manifold from the elements to development initiatives that threaten those treasures. So we need to stand together and stand up to preserve the treasures that we have. That said, I'll turn this over to Joe Nebhan, who I'm sure has a few words to add. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning, Your Honor. Good morning, fellow commissioners. I want to tell you thank you for this honor of the proclamation. Yes, history is very important, but right behind me, I have several people that have been the backbone of Historic Preservation Month. First, I want to introduce Mr. Ron Lyman, the vice chair of the El Paso County Commission. Shelley Sutherland, Dr. Herb Price. And we couldn't do anything that we're doing without the wonderful support from the staff. Mr. Ontiveros and Mr. Nill have been an absolute wonder for us, and we thank you. Thank you for having staff people in this endeavor. I'm going to have Mr. Ron Lyman, who headed up the committee speaker, have a few words about some of the things that have been going on and are continuing to be going on. And just a little thanks for all the volunteers that have served in the many, many programs that are being held throughout El Paso County this month. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I wanted to just briefly tell you a little bit about what the month is. Preservation Month is sponsored by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. So this is a national program. In El Paso, we've been celebrating this for about six years. Two years ago, the city was in charge of it, and it celebrated Manhattan Heights. Last year, the city again was in charge of it. More people became involved. We celebrated the Isleta Historic District. However, we also, for the first time, involved the Mission Trail. And so the event expanded, and it went from Santa Lizario basically to the McGoffin House. This year, we developed what you'd call a steering committee of very interested historians, combination of several of us here today, Shelley Sutherland, Herb Price, myself, along with Gary Williams, the Community Foundation, and Provi Velasquez of the City of El Paso. We formed a steering committee in hopes of developing an alliance to bring all the historical organizations in the county together. We also designated the month title here in El Paso, Preserving Our Places. We made a big commitment to expanding the programs and reaching the entire county. We believe we've been effective with that. We now have programs in the northwest, Keystone. We have them all the way down the valley, Santa Lizario. Very pleased having Rio Bosque as part of this, Waco Tanks, and as well as other locations more in the downtown area, including Duranguito. This year, we have 28 events sponsored by 33 organizations and entities. The Historical Commission approved money to support an ad for the keynote address by Evan Thompson of Preservation Texas. This occurred on May 4th. We're already working on next year's events. We're very excited, because next year, we'll be able to include signage for the Camino Real and the Trolley Program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address the Commissioners Court? Good morning.
Good morning. I do want to thank all of you for your support and help. I want to invite you to accept a challenge, and I want you all to consider becoming part of the preservation effort for next year. And let us know if you have organizations or individuals in your precinct, or if you have a particular place that needs preservation or is appropriate place to do a preservation program. And that will help us grow even more as years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Price, you're like the odd man out. You have to speak.
They've said it all.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you all very much for the work you do. We...
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to work with this marvelous team of commissioners on the El Paso County Historical Commission. I couldn't have had... I couldn't have a better bunch of people to work with. There are numbered 25 committed volunteers who are giving of their time throughout the week, every month, and I think they deserve a hand, too.
Thank you, Chris. And to our commissioners and our chairman and vice chair, as you know, and Chris mentioned, we put resources aside to really try to help bolster the work that you're doing. We've invested staff to help assist the commission. But we also want you to be a part of the overall vision, especially for the Mission Trail, as we go out for, hopefully soon, an RFP, to find a consultant to help us craft the vision and chart a future for the Mission Trail. And also, soon, we will begin working on the downtown survey, and that is a priority for us. And, you know, we walked away from potential grant money so that we could get started on this ASAP. And we would appreciate your support and your assistance through that. But the county is very committed to historic preservation and appreciates the work that you all do very much. A round of applause, please. Mr. Nava, I'd like to go to item number seven next, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pitzik. I can never see when you guys do the switcheroo, so I apologize.
...for the term beginning May 18th, 2017 through May 17th, 2019.
Thank you, Pat. Judge Commissioners, I'm very honored that Mr. Diggs, this is really your third term. Mr. Diggs was born in Baltimore, Maryland, but got here as quickly as you could. And he holds a Master of Arts degree in Human Resource Development, Management, and Organizational Leadership from Webster University. He is, of course, in our risk pool, and I'm very proud to recommend his reappointment.
I'll second that. And Mr. Diggs, thank you so much for the public service that you do and all the time that you provide. Betsy has done a really good job of communicating to all of us how much time and effort you all put into providing solid recommendations to us for the financial health of the risk pool. But I also really appreciate the out-of-the-box thinking that comes from the risk pool to help us enhance the health and welfare of our employees, definitely with an aim of that bottom line, but also about taking care of people. And so we really appreciate your work.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Escobar.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would you like to say a few words?
I would. I would just like to say that having served my country and communities abroad for all of my adult life, this is certainly a unique and rewarding experience. And what makes it rewarding is the appreciation that you all show to people like myself when we do serve our communities. And another piece to that is the effort that Betsy's team, the HR department, they work diligently behind the scenes to ensure that the risk pool and all of those elements come together. And as an entrepreneur, having worked with municipalities, not all municipalities have a risk pool. So we are blessed here in El Paso to do that. And I can tell you, those who don't really suffer to some degree. So thank you for your confidence in me, and I promise that I will do my very best to leave the risk pool in better shape, not that it's in bad shape, but in better shape as I depart sometime down the road.
Thank you so much, sir. Have a wonderful day. Appreciate you. Okay, Ms. Pitzik, we can go back to item five. Or Mr. Nava. You guys switched again. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Item number five, public comments.
I have two individuals signed up to provide the court with public comment. The first is Mr. Jose Landeros, and he will be followed by Pierre Andre Uzarraga. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Judge Commissioners. Jose Landeros with the Office of Commissioner Vince Perez. The reason for the public comment today is just to... And the coming weeks will be... We'll do it again next Monday. We want to let the public know, as well as all of our county team, that the county is moving forward with our regional transit study. Our consultant is the Texas Transportation Institute, and they will be in town the first full week of June and should be meeting with various stakeholders. In addition to meeting with technical stakeholders, we will also be holding four community meetings that first week throughout the county. We'll typically... The first one will actually be on Wednesday, June 7th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Fabin's Road and Bridge Warehouse. The following day, we'll have one on the west side at the northwest annex in the community room, also at 6:00 p.m. We won't have any meetings on Friday, but Saturday morning, the City of Socorro is lending us their facility to have a meeting. That'll be at 9:00 a.m. at the Real Vista Community Center. And then later that afternoon, the Montana Vista Far East Montana community will have a meeting at the ESD Montana Vista Fire Station at 2:00 p.m. The purpose of the meeting is to gain community input about what residents expect out of transit service and as the study moves forward, hopefully identifying any potential that there may be for regional... The implementation of regional transit in the near future. So just wanted to let the court, the county staff, and any folks that may be watching in the public know about these meetings.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
You, too.
Our next speaker is Mr. Uzarraga. Good morning, sir.
Morning, good morning. Yesterday, I got the urge to write an article, and I thought I'd come out here today and read it. It's titled "Contradicting Federal and State Marijuana Policies Promote Crime in America" by Pierre Andre Uzarraga. "America has policies and agencies that enforce the prohibition of marijuana which promote crime in America. You see, the transaction of prohibited marijuana is strictly between two parties, the seller and the buyer. This is to avoid detection from third-party agencies designed to prohibit marijuana transactions. What America fails to realize is that these transactions should be prohibited by governmental agencies instead. They should be monitored by governmental agencies, not to enforce prohibition, but to enforce regulatory policies. The legalization of marijuana promotes the highest safety standards within communities throughout the free land. Without federal support for marijuana legalization, the country simply permits life-threatening dangers to exist within, throughout, and around American homes, neighborhoods, apartment complexes, elementary, middle, high schools, shopping centers, gas stations, car washes, restaurants, churches, just about everywhere and anywhere in America, because legally, there is no designation to perform such prohibited transactions. With federal support for marijuana legalization, America would create legal marketplace where transactions occur in designated locations, such as a licensed retail dispensary, usually located several hundred feet from schools, homes, and churches. Think about the transaction between a seller who sold an off-weight gram to a buyer who shot and killed the seller. This transaction was kept strictly between the seller and the buyer. The bullet could have missed. It could have gone through a wall, killing a neighbor in the apartment next door. Or it could have killed a child who was at the kitchen table doing her homework. Two weeks ago, three men were arrested for capital murder while attempting to rob two men who were selling marijuana. The killers, who were also the buyers, noticed that the sellers were performing transactions... The killers, who were also the buyers, noticed that the sellers were performing transactions while carrying a large amount of marijuana in the vehicle the sellers were performing in, and decided to rob the sellers of their product, as well as any cash they might have had. This robbery and murder took place in the parking lot of an apartment complex, where children were outside playing, coming home from school, residents going to work, coming from work, where the tree and landscape company was on their maintenance call. Many innocent people were at risk of life-threatening dangers. This particular story is sentimental to me because the alleged murderer is a high school friend of mine. Our freshman year at Jefferson, he, myself, and a third friend triple-dated, and we split a limousine on homecoming night. We spent a lot of time during our teenage years growing up, and even spent some time in our twenties. Then, one day, he went his way, and I went mine, as all men do. Next thing I know, he's involved in a marijuana transaction gone wrong, which brings me to the point that a statistical trend of marijuana deals gone wrong occurs more often than known of. See, these statistics, robberies, assaults, vandalism, harassments, and death threats go unreported due to the prohibitive nature of marijuana transactions. And again, this all promotes crime in America. So, in closing, I'd like for us to think about these words. I know Texas Legislative Session, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I know I'm willing to work the next two years, and I want to come out here and announce that. I know there was a bill last session that was passed, the SIGHT and assess, I believe, a SIGHT. There was a bill that basically allows each county in Texas to amend marijuana policies. And I know the judge, you had brought something up, and I'm hoping we can work together. I reviewed the agenda yesterday, and I reviewed the proposal, the letter that you sent to our local senate group, Texas senate group, and I'm very interested in hoping to help with human and health services and the justice side of... But this means dear to me because it does hit home, and, you know, the words hopefully didn't fall upon deaf ears. Thank you for your time. I'll see you all in two weeks.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Moving on to item number six from the regular agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the 85th legislative session to include presenting information for the court's consideration, removing or including bills on the county-state legislative agenda, and supporting or opposing filed legislation, and take any action necessary on aforementioned items.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. Ruben Vogt with the county judge's office. We have two weeks left for this 85th legislative session, so we're very excited that it is coming to a close. Unfortunately, there is a lot of turmoil. I wanted to give the court a brief synopsis before we go into the handout on what occurred last week on Thursday. That was the last day for any House bill to be able to move out of the House. The House is still considering Senate bills, but if the House bill did not pass on Thursday, it was technically considered dead. The House Freedom Caucus, which is composed of about 12 House members, chubbed, as it's called, which is basically got up and grand-standed and spoke for 10 minutes at a time on certain bills, or asked certain questions, or had parliamentary procedural questions to help stall the process. And so, in essence, come midnight on Thursday, they were able to stall the process, so much so that they killed effectively about 150 bills. Representative Blanco from El Paso had about seven bills on that list, which was probably more than any other member in the House. And so, the only way, that ties into our bills, and that it affected one bill in particular, which you'll see on your handout, number seven, our fractionalized lots bill. It had moved in the House. It was left pending in committee, but we were hopeful that it would get sent to local and consent, where it would get shot out quickly. But effectively, it's dead now because the Senate version has not moved. The other bills, thankfully, in green, are those that we believe still have some life. If it has a companion House bill that is truly local, like our hot tax bill, which is bracketed to El Paso only, it could potentially get voted out on Wednesday. If it does not, then the House version would be dead. Thankfully, most of the bills in green have a companion Senate version, which can still move through the House and pass. Or, we, for example, our video recording bill, it was sent to local and consent, that's number 12, local and consent in the House, which effectively, it's dead as of now, but we're gonna try to amend that bill onto the pre-trial reports, bill number 11, which has a hearing in the Senate Criminal Justice Committee tomorrow. And so, we're doing everything we can to ensure that our bills still have life of our 17. We think that eight will pass, still hopeful. One of them has passed and has been sent to the governor, that is number 17, our bailiff pay scale bill. So, we have to wait for the governor to sign that, and hopefully, he won't veto it, but we don't have any indication that he will. So, that is a synopsis of where we're at today. Again, this week will be very interesting to see how it plays out. The House Freedom Caucus could, once again, come out and stall the process, killing even more bills. Part of the reason why they're doing that is that they are frustrated because they feel like their priority bills were not given the platform that they had hoped they would be given. So, the bathroom bill, Senate Bill 2, for example, and others, didn't move as they would like to have seen them move. There is concern now that a special session could occur, even more so now than before Thursday, because part of the bill list that was killed, one of them included a sunset bill. And a sunset bill allows for state agencies to be reviewed about every 12 years, and there was about a dozen state agencies that were set to be reviewed. This was called a sunset safety bill that did not get heard on Thursday. That basically extends the life of the agency for about two to three more years without having to have a thorough review. So, because it didn't pass, there's a potential for those agencies to basically close. One of those agencies is TaxDOT. And so, because that occurred, there is the talk of the need for a special session. And there's also a lot of talk about that opening the door for the bathroom bill to also be considered during that special session as well. And so, the potential for that to occur is much higher now as of Thursday. The next item I wanted to bring up to the court was a revenue caps bill that was heard on Wednesday of last week, Senate Bill 2. Thank you to Mr. Hardgrove and Mr. Dion, who went to testify, as well as Commissioner Stout, who was there to testify on behalf of the Commissioners' Court. We also had letters sent on behalf of the Greater Chamber and our tax assessor-collector in opposition. There was a committee substitute laid out that morning that helped make the bill a little better. It still contained revenue caps. Testimony went on until about 1:30 in the morning, early on Thursday. And on Friday morning, they did vote out the committee substitute. What they did do, though, which was helpful, is that they removed the revenue cap portion of that bill, so it made the bill very good, in essence. The concern is, and why so many of the same groups that were opposed to it before are still opposed, is that it now goes to the House floor, which, what we've seen in the past on some big bills, when it gets to the House floor, amendments are added. So, they could very well add the revenue cap portion back into that bill. And if it does or doesn't, it still has to go to a conference committee between the House and the Senate. And so, at that point, it could also be added. So, if we support it suddenly, it could give it legs to move quicker and ultimately pass with an amendment to include revenue caps.
And, Ruben, I'm gonna interrupt real quickly, just because I, on my Conference of Ruben County's conference call this morning, our team, I got big props for our team. I wanted to let you all know, especially you, Commissioner Stout, because I didn't watch the testimony, but Don Lee said that you had the tremendous misfortune of being one of the first ones to be called up, and the sponsor of the bill, according to Don, was extraordinarily hostile towards folks that were testifying, in a way that was not just unhospitable, but it was, like, openly hostile. He said you kept your cool, and you were very well-informed, and that you really pushed El Paso's interests and local government's interests very well. He said the same thing of our staff, so I just want to publicly share that with everyone, excuse me, with everyone, and thank you for doing that. I don't know that many others would have been able to keep their cool in the same way, because it just, and I didn't watch it, but it sounded terrible. So, thank you.
It was extremely hostile. That is probably an understatement, I think. I know that when Commissioner Stout spoke, there were a lot of questions. He was cut off, basically, from being able to continue his testimony and had to answer questions that were a bit unfair. The same goes to Mr. Dion and Mr. Hardgrove, who were asked questions as well, but they had all the facts, and they were ready to present on why this would be bad for El Paso County. So, it was great. That is it in terms of my update. Again, we're not bringing bills to the court any longer, in that we only have two weeks left, and so, what's moving is moving, and what's dead is basically dead. Our efforts really are in trying to get our bills to continue to move through the process. It's become now that much harder as of Thursday, but I am also available to answer any questions that the court may have.
Thanks, Ruben. Any questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you so much. And Caesar, with all my switcheroos, we skipped over items taken from consent, the one item.
Item number 3D from the consent agenda. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the program amendment forms for modification of Amendment 1 related to contract number 2016-0513 to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Colonia Self-Help Center Program, contract number 7214003. Forms were reviewed and approved by the county attorney's office, contract number 2017-0236.
Good morning. Herbie Van Swetlak, Community Services.
It states on the background that the $300,000 is coming primarily from the revolving loan fund, but then, looking at the specific transfers, $120,000 is coming from the revolving loan fund, and then, $184,000 is coming from the self-help program. It's also mentioned that Commissioners' Court took action on this on Amendment Number 1 on August 8th. I was just hoping that you could provide just some clarity. We've talked a little about this previously, but I'm a little concerned about how this might affect the self-help program moving forward, and if you...
You're right. The Amendment was, Amendment 1 was approved in August 2016. We submitted it to the funding agency for review. They did review it for several months. In the meantime, we did perform on the contract, so there were some changes in the metrics that they wanted us to then modify and include in the final amendment before they approved. As far as the funding accounts, it's all from, I believe, and Mr. Dion or Wally, they can clarify, I believe it's from a Texas capital fund, but different accounts, Wally? From the revolving loan fund?
I believe so. I'll double-check.
And so, it's a cash match? These two accounts are comprising, I guess, a cash match for the...
That is correct. And if you recall, when we closed the revolving loan fund program, the county still had some program income. Those are incoming receivables from our current outstanding loans that are still paying into the revolving loan fund. When we closed it, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs asked that the county reallocate the existing program income into another community development block grant program to make sure that those monies are being spent according to CDPG guidelines. And so, the court approved allocating that money as a cash match to the Colonia Self-Help Center program, which is another community development block grant program funded by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. And so, I understand it's coming from different accounts, but it's from the revolving loan fund account, is my understanding. And it is allocated as a cash match, and it's all going towards the specific line item for reconstruction of homes. We were originally allocated, and there is a cap in this grant where the state only allows $50,000 from their money to be allocated towards reconstruction of a home. We're allocating this revolving loan fund cash match to leverage those $50,000 to be able to construct a complete home. And we're going from, we originally asked for that funding to build four homes, this cash match is gonna assist in building nine homes. And that is where the beneficiary count goes, it fluctuates as well.
And I was just able to confirm that this is the closeout balance for the revolving loan fund.
And the other $184,000 is from self-help? Because that's just where I'm confused, is...
In the backup, it looks like the money is being moved from one line item to another.
We are moving, we are moving funding from line items, from our home repair line item, as well as from our rehabilitation line item, where we reduced those metrics. We're only doing, for example, for the small repair line item, if you look at the document, for the performance statement document, Exhibit A, we struck down, we were originally going to assist 16 residences with small repairs, up to $10,000 per household. We reduced that to one, and so, we are moving those funds. You are correct, Commissioner Perez. I was a little confused as to what accounts you were referencing, but we are moving that funding from that line item, where we're only assisting one household with small repairs, and we're moving that into the reconstruction line item to help leverage those funds as well. We are also reducing the performance metrics for our rehabilitation line item. We originally said we were going to rehabilitate 10 homes. We're now doing eight, so that remaining funding is also being directed to the reconstruction line item. So, it is partly the proceeds from the closeout of the revolving loan fund, and then switching out some of these performance metrics and some of this funding into the reconstruction so that we can be able to build those nine homes. And that's probably that amount, Wally, the $180...
So, Commissioner, I'm still confirming those amounts right now, so if you'd like to just lay this one on the table for a bit, as soon as I have that confirmation, whatever agenda item we're at, and I'll bring that back up.
Okay.
God bless you.
All right. So, yeah, yeah, so let's move on and hold on for Wally. Let's go ahead and move on to item eight. We'll come back to this one.
Item number eight, county administration. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt an amended county managerial operations policy.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Betsy Keller, county administrator. And their backup on page two of the county managerial operations policy, we are adding a Section B6, which would say, "The chief administrator will notify Commissioners' Court in advance on position modifications impacting the chief administrator's office, effective May 15, 2017." So, before any regrades, reorganizations, changes to positions in their structure in the chief administrator's office, the chief administrator would notify the court in advance of those changes.
Thanks, Betsy. Commissioners, any questions?
Should the Court, Commissioners' Court consider a timeframe? I mean, because the way it's worded is, I think it's worded a little ambiguously, where it's, it just says in advance. I mean, would this imply, like, before Commissioners' Court or before we... I just don't know if the courts... I'll go however the court...
How far in advance? Is that what you're asking?
Right. I mean, would it be like a week notice before Commissioners' Court, a two-week notice, or it just says in advance?
If you'd like to approve it with an amendment, I think a week is an easy advance notice for a position modification, or whatever timeframe the court thinks is reasonable. The chief administrator will notify Commissioners' Court at least one week in advance on position modifications impacting the chief administrator's office?
That's fine with me, just as long as there's some specific timeframe mention.
So, we would add at least one week?
Well, my issue with a week is it's not a lot of time in case there is, because the whole point of this is to decide if there's issues, correct? Or, because if it's a week's notice, and with the spirit of what this intention is, in case any Commissioners have issues with it, to make sure... in case any Commissioners have issues with it, to make sure, if it's a week's notice and there's issues, will that stop it? Have people already been told? Is this a week before hiring the person or a week before...
Now, this has nothing to do with, I want to be clear, this has nothing to do with like who the chief administrator hires or who they fire. This has to do with the positions in their office. So if there's a change to a position in the office, the chief administrator gives some advance notice. And I'm okay with a week, two weeks, whatever the pleasure of the court, but it doesn't, if I choose to, I have a vacancy and I choose to hire, who I choose to hire for that position, that is not what I'm going to be giving advance notice on.
Right.
If I choose to change the position from an office specialist intermediate to an office specialist entry, that would require advance notice.
I guess, how much notice do they have to give you? Do you require in departments that are wanting to do it?
They bring me the request and I review it. A lot of times I can review it that day. Sometimes if I have questions, I need, I would say, a week for me to work back and forth with the department on what the concerns are.
And just with the difficulty of us not being able to talk, and I think two weeks just to make life more forgiving, I guess, in case there's issues with us talking. So I would just say two weeks just for the spirit of what the contention is.
Okay. Anything else?
Moved to approve, okay, so I'm moved to approve an amendment with two weeks' notice.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 9, litigation, justice, and law enforcement. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Training Lab Use of Force Training Simulator Agreement with TI Training Corp. in the amount of $61,350 to train students in simulation systems to aid in teaching public safety personnel to effectively and safely perform their duties. Funding is available in Sheriff JAG 2015 grant. Contract number 2017-0167.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am. Commander Flores again with the sheriff's office. This is the completion of the contract with TI on the firearms training and use of force simulator that was previously approved by the court. And all we did was finalize the contract and include the shootback cannon that was also discussed.
We'll approve. Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 10, Public Works. I'd like to read in a correction to item number 10. Should we discuss and take appropriate action regarding the Techstat Transportation Alternative Set Aside Call for Projects and authorize public works staff to submit the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Application for 13 projects and authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolutions?
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Norma Palacios, Public Works Department. There's a call for projects through Techstat, through the Transportation Alternative, also known as a TA Set Aside Program. This program was established through the FAST Act and provides funding for a variety of alternative non-vehicle transportation projects. These projects are included, and these projects are projects such as on-road vehicle improvements, off-road share-use paths, sidewalks, infrastructure improvements on abandoned railroad corridors. These programs are to facilitate non-motorized transportation and mitigate congestion. This program also includes activities that were previously funded under separate programs such as a transportation enhancements program, Safe Routes, which is one of the programs that's currently going on in Sparks and Westway, and also recreational trail programs. The funding available is $26 million. That's set aside for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. As mentioned earlier, the funds can only be used for non-vehicle construction. This program also requires a 20% county match, and this can be an in-kind match. There's also the opportunity for this match to be less because we're in economically disadvantaged county, so it can be anywhere from 7% to 20%. The deadline to submit these projects is May 22 at 5:00 p.m. The selection of the projects will take place during the months of August and September. Sorry, I forget to change this. The selection of the projects will take place during the months of August and September, and the funds will be awarded in the month of November 2017. The county has identified 13 projects. 12 projects would be for sidewalks and one for a bike hike bike trail. We've identified four projects in the Westway area, and these would be sidewalk projects. We've identified three projects in the Sparks area, also sidewalk projects, four in the Montana Vista sidewalk projects, and another one in the Desert Exceptin, also known as the Square Dance subdivision, and it would be one road, which is the Desert Exceptin, the main road that feeds all the other streets within that subdivision. And the last road that was identified is OT Smith, and this would be for a hike bike These are the eligible areas, the areas that are eligible for this type of funding. For the Westway, like I mentioned, we had identified four projects. If you will notice, the blue line, that is for the Tom Mace Road, and it will provide sidewalks from Coach Road to Westway. Then we have the green line, which is the Alba Drive, and this is for starting at Coach Road all the way to Westway. We also have the red line, which is from Coach Road to Zinn, and then the yellow line, which would be Tiffany, would be Tiffany Road from the Alba to Remington. All these areas would get sidewalks. What is real important is to see what the roads look like. A lot of these roads were paved, you see in border Colonia funds, but there was not enough funding to do sidewalks. And a lot of these roads are roads that lead to school areas. This is also one that was paved, and if you notice, it has the curb, but like I mentioned, there was no funding for the sidewalks, so this would really benefit the community. The other projects, the other three projects that we identified in the Sparks area are Bret Hart Road from Non-Nap Road to Peyton, that's a green line. Then we have the yellow line from Mark Twain to Jeremiah, and then we have the red line from Non-Nap to Dickens. We have done some sidewalks. We just completed those, but what this would allow us to do is to do both sides of the road. Because the sidewalks that we were doing, it was for only one side of the road. So by obtaining, by hopefully getting this funding, we would be able to do both sidewalks on both sides of the roads. And this is what you currently have. If you notice, there's the school signs, but no sidewalks. So this would be also for the safety of the people who live in the area. The next one is the Montana Vista projects, and this is four projects, four sidewalk projects. The blue line is Vista de Leste from Marvin to Greg. The red line is Craig Street from Marvin to Greg Road. The green line, Santiago Esteban Lane from Vista de Leste to Craig Street, and the yellow line would provide sidewalks to Greg Road from Vista de Leste to Mark Jason. These are the existing conditions in those roads. Our last sidewalk project would be Square Dance Road, and like I mentioned, this road is the one that leads or provides access to all the roads within this subdivision. And we were proposing to provide sidewalks to Square Dance Road from Lopez Road, which it really is from Antana all the way to Lopez Road. This is what the road currently looks like. And our bike hike trail that we identified is OT Smith. This would be providing that type of trail from Alameda Road all the way to I-10, to the intersection of I-10. These are the current conditions in that area. So this is a typical cross-section. We would provide five-foot sidewalks in the projects that I had mentioned earlier. And these are the costs associated with these projects. If you notice, we have, on the title, we have the project location, the street, then we would provide a five-foot sidewalks. Then we also have the ramps, which would be handicap ramps. This project would also provide driveways. And then we also have curb and gutter. In the initial projects, when we did the Colonia projects, it provided for all of these. But as we applied for other grants, we no longer had funding available to do the sidewalks, ramps, curb and gutter. And so these programs would allow us to do this. We're estimating the total construction cost to be $4,430,453.60. The county match at 20% would be $886.92. If we were to qualify for the best-case scenario, the county would be responsible for $310.131.75, and that would be the best-case scenario. Like I mentioned, this can be in-kind services also, but it does not include the design. The county would have to pay for the design of these projects. But today, we're asking the court to authorize us to submit an application for these 13 projects and also for the judge to sign the resolution for these projects.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do you all have any questions? Commissioner Leon?
Norma, I noticed that on Square Dance, the sidewalks did not reach all the way to the final road. I think it stops on Lopez. Is there any reason for that?
Yes, sir. I have Sal who's joining me here.
Good morning. Sal Alonso from Public Works. Yes, the reason it stopped short is the last portion of Square Dance is not paved. So hopefully between now and when the funds come available, we were able to allocate some funding to pave that, we would be able to extend the sidewalk past that. But the application that I'm actually submitting to Techstat will include the extension, but I didn't show it because there is no, currently right now, there is no street, so we would have to have some sort of pavement for the last stretch of Square Dance.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
This fills a very large need in my precinct, I know, so I'm moved to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the court order conveyance document to vacate the alley at First and Camp Streets in Fabin's and accept $2,961 for the alley vacation. Contract number 2016-0524.
El Paso Electric has purchased approximately 1.8 acres of the property at the southwest corner of Camp Street and West First Street in Fabin's. If you notice, what's highlighted in blue is what actually belongs to the El Paso Electric Company. What's in the red area is the easement that belongs to the county. So they are interested in vacating the area that's highlighted in red and vacating and purchasing it or for the county to convey it to them. Because since it dissects their property, this would be beneficial to them. This area that's dissected is a 16-foot-wide utility easement that belongs to the county. There is a sanitary sewer line in that utility, the alley, that belongs to Fabin's Water. El Paso Electric is aware of that, and they will allow that to be used for that purpose. So this property was appraised at $3,500, but because the utility company is only getting 84.6% of the property, we are asking for 84.6% of the value of the property. We have no objections since we don't have a use for it.
Thank you, Norma. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Leon?
Norma, you mentioned that we do have utilities running through that, but then you say that we have no use for that. Do we need access to that strip?
It wouldn't be us, Commissioner. It would be the El Paso Water, and El Paso Electric Company has agreed to allow them to use it because it's a sewer line.
Good, thank you.
Our use was for an alley, correct?
I'm sorry?
We had an alley usage, right?
This is known as an alley.
Yeah, so we're not going to use it as an alley anymore.
It's a 15-foot wide between two properties, so the only thing we would be doing now is maintaining that.
Which doesn't make any sense that they own them both. Moved to approve.
Why, we don't have an objection.
We have the motion, okay.
Judge, before the court votes pursuant to Transportation Code, Section 251.051 and 058, in order to vacate a right-of-way, the court would require unanimous vote, just for your information.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
So if I vote no, I throw it all off? Okay, I'll vote yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12. Discuss and take appropriate action for a variance request from the County of El Paso Subdivision Regulations for Dairyland Subdivision Replant L.
Judge, I don't know if you would be in agreement to take items 12, 13, 14, and 15. It's the same developer. It's the same type of variance that they're requesting.
Of course. Let's take all those three together. Thank you.
Item number 13. Discuss and take appropriate action for a variance request from the County of El Paso Subdivision Regulations for Dairyland Subdivision Replant N. Item number 14. Discuss and take appropriate action for a variance request from the County of El Paso Subdivision Regulations for Dairyland Subdivision Replant O. Item 15. Discuss and take appropriate action for a variance request from the County of El Paso Subdivision Regulations for Punta de Leste Unit 2 subdivision.
Pascua Ventures is requesting a variance of the subdivision regulations because the lots do not conform to the required 3:1 ratio as per Section 2.8 of the county subdivision regulations. They have met all the requirements. These are all in precinct 3. They are in the city of Socorro, CTJ. They will have Lower Valley Water District. They will have water from the Lower Valley Water District, and all of them will have septic tanks.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
We need to open it up for public comment.
Public comment. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the Commissioners Court on any of these items during public comment for them? Hearing none? Any questions from the court or a motion?
A motion to approve.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Item number 16. Approve and accept the revision of a Austin subdivision to be named Austin Subdivision Replant B pursuant to requirements of the Texas Local Government Code, Section 232.041 Revision of Platt, and authorize the filing and recording of the subdivision plat.
This subdivision has met all state and county subdivision regulations and requirements, and the developer, property owner, is requesting the recording and approval of the Austin subdivision Replant B.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or a motion?
Judge, once again, we'd like to ask you to open it up for any public comment or a...
objections.
Thank you. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the Commissioners' Court on this item during public comment for it? Hearing none? Any questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. And we're ready to take back or go back to the item, Mr. Navas, that was pulled from consent, item 43D.
Item number 3D, which has already been read into the record.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hargrove?
Thank you, Judge. Went back and looked at the history on this one. This one goes back a couple of years. So the amount that we originally had available and obligated from the county back in August of 16 was in agreement with the state to close out our Texas Capital Fund. Their original revolving loan fund was over $1.1 million. There was almost a half a million dollars written off. We had paid the opposing half a million dollars to the state. When you took the cash on hand into account, the state had approved our reprogramming of that cash on hand, and the county set up a cash match back in August of last year and transferred that cash match into the Colonia Self-Help Fund. So that transaction's already occurred for the $184,853. Over the life of these outstanding loans, as the individuals make these loan payments, those loan payments will go into the general fund of the county. And I've reached out to the division in Mr. Dion's office to get a current status of those loan payments, just so that we know over time. I think we probably should get at least a quarterly update what the progress and repayment of those terms of the loans are. So originally, this was cash match that went into the program last August that has since been transferred into the program. So the total of the $302,000 is available to successfully complete this program if approved.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Perez?
And the term of this contract is how long?
The Colonia Self-Help Center contract, the grant contract, Commissioner? This grant contract expires in September of 2018.
Is it a two-year contract?
This was...
The whole duration of the contract was two years?
It's a four-year contract. It started in 2014, and it expires in 2018, sir.
And then the amount of funds expended, now that we're, I guess, two years into a four-year contract, how has that performed? Are we half 50% through the...
We're not at 50%, sir. We are a little bit behind on the performance of this contract. There's been a lot of issues that we've encountered. The state changed some of the regulations on our, the reason why we're transferring some money from some line items into the construction line item. For the rehabilitation portion of the grant contract, we are required to rehabilitate up to $40,000 per home. Those homes require the state to pick up a lien on the property. And so we've had some issues with our Colonia homeowners who already have first liens. They're in bankruptcy. They have other issues on their properties, and so the state's unable to pick up a lien. So we were unable to help them. So we've had to rotate some of our clients out of the program, and so that's put us behind of performing on the contract, sir. But we are in the bid specification phase for the rehabilitation and the new construction. We've already identified all nine homes for the construction project, and we're finalizing those bid specifications, and we're going to be working with purchasing to bid this contract out. We do expect to be complete by December of this year. We've actually exceeded our performance metrics for the items that we have performed in. For example, our solid waste campaign, we said we were going to do seven campaigns, which is we had a solid waste company bring out two large containers to our self-up center site where the community is able to go and dispose of household trash. We had that for seven months in a row, and we did 13, we were supposed to do it for seven. We have 13 campaigns already done so far within the same amount of money that we were allocated for it. So, and we've overperformed on our tool lending library metrics as well. We were only asked to do 400 tool checkouts, and we exceeded that by far. It's just the construction line items that we're a little bit behind on because of some of the lien issues that we've experienced when we've qualified candidates for the program.
I'm going to make a motion to approve staff recommendation, but can we set up a meeting to chat about this a little bit more?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 17, budget and finance. Approve Amendment Number 28 to the County of El Paso's 2016-2017 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will not increase or decrease the overall budget of $389,189,890.51.
Mr. Hargrove?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. We have two amendments within the general fund. Both amendments relate to the prior contract you approved with Aramark for our kitchen services. So we are transferring the salary-related fringe benefits out of each of the detention facility and the jail annex and the remaining balance of the food budget, which is titled subsistence. So the transfer in the detention facility downtown is netting $387,862 into contract services. The transfer at the county jail annex is for a total of $836,459. So it's still a net no increase, just coming out of the related food accounts and salary and fringe benefits for the kitchen staff. We have one transfer within special revenues under the road and bridge fleet, transferring $15,000 out of maintenance and repair automobile to maintenance and repair equipment to make necessary repairs through the end of the fiscal year '17. Would ask for your favorable consideration.
Thank you, Wally. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Or a motion? Okay.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 18, approve and authorize the allocation of capital funding for the replacement of the air conditioner at the family youth services building. Funding is available in account CP Improvements 01 Equipment.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. We are in need of replacing the AC system at the youth service facility. It has been offline more than it's been online. The summer season is coming up. We have estimates right now for not to exceed $47,000. This is for the removal of the existing system, line replacement, and replacement of a new system that will differ from the current one we have. As Caesar mentioned, the funding would be available in our capital improvement CIP One Penny Fund.
I do want to note that this item will also be, it's also something we're working with Legal on, as that is a fairly new building, and the system has not worked properly since the building was turned over to the county. So we are working with Legal on what recourse we have with either the equipment manufacturer or the contractor.
Thank you, Betsy. Any questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Kevin, item 22 does not have a corresponding executive session item. Did you want to take it now or after we're done with executive?
I think that we added an only addendum.
Item 23, it looks like it's a different item.
What they did was originally, they had one that wasn't on executive, but they had it on the regular afterwards.
Yeah, online, it's showing in item 23. Looks to be the same one.
Item 23 is the same as item 21?
22.
But item 22 does not have a corresponding executive session item, unless I'm looking at something different online. Because items 21 and 23 both have the date October 19 and the same case number.
Item 22 goes with 19D, Judge.
Ah, okay. Never mind. All right, let's go into executive session.
Commissioners' Court will now reassess into executive session to discuss items 19A through 19E and addendum to the agenda, item number 23. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scsnera@epcounty.com for any information. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week, he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Did you know the County of El Paso has a YouTube channel? Go to youtube.com and search "The County of El Paso, Texas." There, you will find videos highlighting some of the departments within the county. Don't forget to like our videos and subscribe to the channel. Here's an information technology-friendly reminder on how to protect your mobile devices. Make sure the OS and software are up to date at all times. Download apps from reputable sites and closely review permission requests. Use a strong, complex password. Turn off Bluetooth and other connections when not in use. Please don't download apps from third-party app stores and sites, and please don't leave your mobile device unattended in public places.
All County Offices will be closed Monday, May 29th in observance of the Memorial Day
All county offices will be closed Monday, May 29th in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies. Or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings! As a reminder from the Information Technology Department, please don't save critical or sensitive data on your desktop. Instead, best practices is to save your data to your user allocated home drive. This drive has safeguards preventing data loss. Again, this is an information technology friendly reminder.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Did you know the County of El Paso has a YouTube channel? Go to youtube.com and search "The County of El Paso, Texas." There, you will find videos highlighting some of the departments within the county. Don't forget to like our videos and subscribe to the channel.
Here's an information technology friendly reminder on how to protect your mobile devices. Make sure the OS and software are up to date at all times. Download apps from reputable sites and closely review permission requests. Use a strong complex password. Turn off Bluetooth and other connections when not in use. Please don't download apps from third-party app stores and sites. And please don't leave your mobile device unattended in public places.
All county offices will be closed Monday, May 29th in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, May 30th, 2017. Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings! As a reminder from the Information Technology Department, please don't save critical or sensitive data on your desktop. Instead, best practices is to save your data to your user allocated home drive. This drive has safeguards preventing data loss. Again, this is an information technology friendly reminder.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barrios started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Card Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD; or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at (915) 546-2119, or email her at sserna@epcounty.com for any information.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Did you know the County of El Paso has a YouTube channel? Go to youtube.com and search "The County of El Paso, Texas." There, you will find videos highlighting some of the departments within the county. Don't forget to like our videos and subscribe to the channel.
Here's an information technology friendly reminder on how to protect your mobile devices. Make sure the OS and software are up to date at all times. Download apps from reputable sites and closely review permission requests. Use a strong complex password. Turn off Bluetooth and other connections when not in use. Please don't download apps from third-party app stores and sites, and please don't leave your mobile device unattended in public places.
All county offices will be closed Monday, May 29th in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, May 30th, 2017.
All county offices will be closed Monday, May 29th in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, May 30th, 2017. Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast-the number two coastrx.com. Happy savings! As a reminder from the Information Technology Department, please don't save critical or sensitive data on your desktop. Instead, best practices is to save your data to your user allocated home drive. This drive has safeguards preventing data loss. Again, this is an information technology friendly reminder.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barrios started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Did you know the County of El Paso has a YouTube channel? Go to youtube.com and search "The County of El Paso, Texas." There, you will find videos highlighting some of the departments within the county. Don't forget to like our videos and subscribe to the channel.
Here's an information technology friendly reminder on how to protect your mobile devices. Make sure the OS and software are up to date at all times. Download apps from reputable sites and closely review permission requests. Use a strong complex password. Turn off Bluetooth and other connections when not in use. Please don't download apps from third-party app stores and sites, and please don't leave your mobile device unattended in public places.
All county offices will be closed Monday, May 29th in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, May 30th, 2017. Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast-the number two coastrx.com. Happy savings! As a reminder from the Information Technology Department, please don't save critical or sensitive data on your desktop. Instead, best practices is to save your data to your user allocated home drive. This drive has safeguards preventing data loss. Again, this is an information technology friendly reminder.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barrios started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting
including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the Northeast, West Side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Did you know the County of El Paso has a YouTube channel? Go to youtube.com and search "The County of El Paso, Texas." There, you will find videos highlighting some of the departments within the county. Don't forget to like our videos and subscribe to the channel. Here's an information technology friendly reminder on how to protect your mobile devices. Make sure the OS and software are up to date at all times. Download apps from reputable sites and closely review permission requests. Use a strong complex password. Turn off Bluetooth and other connections when not in use. Please don't download apps from third-party app stores and sites, and please don't leave your mobile device unattended in public places.
Commissioners' Court has reconvened into regular open session. Could we please have a motion to delete item #19E from the executive session, please?
Hey, we have a motion from Commissioner Hagerty. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item #20, discuss and take appropriate action on potential litigation regarding Senate Bill IV.
We have a lot of new guests in the audience, and I don't know if anyone signed up or wanted to address the court. Mr. Garcia, and then afterwards if you could please fill out a form.
Can we still fill out a form? I mean, because we were not early in the morning.
I'll allow you to speak to address the court.
And anybody else that is willing to do this. So, thank you. Fernando Garcia, I'm the Executive Director of the Border Network for Human Rights. We saw in the agenda that you had this discussion today. And what we did is we started a petition this weekend. It's a non-binary petition, I would like to say, but it is just, it shows what is the feeling of the community in regards to this specific issue. Before I read the petition, I want to just mention that El Paso has been taking the lead on many of these issues for many, many, many years. We have been in the forefront on combating racism, discrimination, and violation of human rights. And the county actually has been a vocal about its opposition to anti-immigrant agendas and anti-immigrant legislations specifically in the state of Texas. So SB4, it is the most racist anti-immigrant agenda in the history of Texas. There is no way, there is no other way to put it. It targets a specific community. I mean, this law, it is framed to target Latino, Hispanics, immigrant, immigrant and immigrant families. The consequences of SB4 are gonna be felt, not only in terms of family separation, which is bad already, but it's gonna be felt in terms of security, safety issues in our community. Why, why we want to put our local police departments asking the questions of immigration reform, immigration laws? They show me your papers policy. It's gonna undermine this idea that El Paso is the safest community in the nation. I mean, there is no way. I can promise you, I can promise you that if SB4 start being implemented in El Paso, either by the local police department and the sheriff, we're not gonna call them to report abuses. We're not gonna call them to report crime because the doubt and the possibility that they will ask me about my immigration papers, it is gonna be there very present. So saying that, there was this petition that I want to read aloud briefly. It says, "A petition by the El Paso County Residents to El Paso County Commissioners' Court. The undersigned residents of El Paso County who feel safe when public safety is provided in a matter that uplifts our dignity and rights, who flourish as part of our diverse, inclusive, and welcoming communities that benefit from the contribution of immigrants of all origins, backgrounds, and statuses, and who stand with you in rejecting the racist policies being forced on us by the state of Texas and at this time of uncertainty and fear, Commissioners and Judge, we, the community, first commend your determination to provide public safety for all communities and praise your opposition to SB4, which promotes abuses like racial profiling and fosters community mistrust. Second, we applaud you for challenging the constitutionality of these unjust and destructive laws in the courts. Third, we support you in your commitment to follow, to following and sustaining the 2006 federal court settlement preventing the county from inquiring about immigration status or enforcing immigration laws. Finally, we thank you for using your voice to amplify our stories and to, in the powers of your office, to advocate against, against and resist the implementation of SB4 and other hateful measures. Thank you for standing with our communities and values. We take heart in the courage of your actions and we encourage to file a lawsuit in behalf of the county against SB4." And I want to give you two copies. In just two days, the weekend, 900 signatures. So I just wanted to pass it around.
Thank you.
So with that, I just want to say, what I did say in English is, la petición que entregamos cerca de 900 firmas, aplaudiendo la posibilidad de que el condado pueda meter una demanda en contra de la SB4. No al SB4, gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. And many thanks to all of you who are here in the audience. We really appreciate that you are taking the time to be with us as we deliberate over this. Muchísimas gracias a todos ustedes por estar aquí con nosotros para este tema tan importante. Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that that you authorize the county judge to sign a letter of agreement with Garza, Golando, and Moran LLC to provide litigation services in relation to Senate Bill IV.
Second.
And before we take the vote, I do want to say to, to the community that I'm very proud that the Commissioners' Court has always been in opposition to this bill, and we have stood with local law enforcement leaders, not just locally, but law enforcement leaders across the state have been vocally and vehemently opposed to this legislation because of the amount of discretion it removes from them. Local law enforcement leaders will not be able to draft their own policy for their own deputies and officers. They will not be able to discipline their own people as a result. And El Paso County is in a very unique situation, as has been mentioned many times before. We actually have an agreement in federal court that says our officers will not enforce federal immigration law. And so not only does the law signed by the governor take away our local law enforcement's discretion, but it would cause us to immediately be in violation of a federal agreement. Furthermore, this community has a lot at stake. We have been very, very proud for many, many, many years, over a dozen years, about the fact that we are one of the safest cities in America, one of the safest communities in America. By the signing, when this bill was signed into law, and once it becomes law on September 1st, we run a tremendous risk of losing an important part of our identity, an important part of what makes us proud of who we are, and it is contrary to our values. And so, in my view, this is why it is important for us to proceed, to take the lead, and to act as aggressively and quickly as possible.
Commissioner Perez?
Motion on the floor?
Yes. Is to allow me to sign the letter of agreement with Garza, Golando, and Moran.
Aye.
Yes. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all. Muchísimas gracias. Gracias. Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you. Caesar, we can continue with the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
Item #21, discuss and take appropriate action to cancel and rescind the Commissioners' Court order of October 19th, 2015 that canceled certain subdivision plats in the Mountain Shadow Estates subdivision in El Paso County, Texas. County Attorney Case Number 028514LD. And that was a corrected version from the county attorney's office that was read.
Good afternoon. Judge, County Commissioners, Kevin McCarry, Assistant County Attorney. As you know, this resolution to rescind your prior resolution is related to an ongoing lawsuit that the county has now entered into a settlement agreement as a part of that agreement. You agreed to rescind your resolution and order of October 19th, 2015, and instead the property will be bound by the terms of the settlement agreement that we negotiated. So I need a, I need a motion and a vote to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the resolution and order rescinding the County Commissioners' Court Order of October 19th, 2015 that canceled the plats described in the resolution.
Okay, any questions or a motion?
Moved. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries. And addendum to the, addendum to the agenda, item #22, regular session. Discuss and take appropriate action to cancel and rescind the Commissioners' Court Order of September 21st, 2015, ordering the filing of the documents now known as document #20150066537, and relating to the Commissioners' Court Order of September 6th, 1989, regarding the Mountain Shadow Estates subdivision in El Paso County, Texas. County Attorney Case Number 028514LD.
Good afternoon again, Judge, County Commissioners, Kevin McCarry, Assistant County Attorney. This resolution is also related to the lawsuit we were just discussing. As a part of that settlement agreement, the county agreed to rescind its order filing its minutes of September 6th, 1989. That took place on September 21st, 2015. And rather than file those in the deed records, the plats will be treated as described in the settlement agreement entered into by the county. So I need a resolution, I need a motion to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the resolution that was circulated this morning.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And before we adjourn, I just, I want to make sure that we did the appropriate thing. Christina, I read from your, from your memo. Let me read it. Here's what I read as my motion. And tell me if it was correct. A motion to authorize the county judge to sign a letter of agreement with Garza, Golando, and Moran LLC to provide litigation services in relation to Senate Bill IV?
Right, that is just the litigation services. It's not talking about the second portion of it.
Okay, motion to file the lawsuit.
Okay, and so if that's the will of the court, then the motion for that would, and to authorize the law firm of Garza, Golando, and Moran LLC to file a lawsuit on behalf of El Paso County against the state of Texas relating to SB4.
Thank you for catching that. So moved.
Second.
Boy, that would have been embarrassing.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty? Judge Escobar?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Christina, thanks to your team and everybody involved for helping shepherd all of this to this point and for the work that is gonna be involved. My hope is also, just as an aside, that the county attorney's office gained some really great civil rights experience through the process as well because you never know what's gonna happen in the future. And the more that your folks can, can kind of get trained on this firsthand, the better off the county will be. Okay, thank you. All right, that's it. We're adjourned.
This concludes today's meeting at 1:11 p.m.
...for the community. So if you live in the Northeast, West Side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Did you know the County of El Paso has a YouTube channel? Go to youtube.com and search "The County of El Paso, Texas." There, you will find videos highlighting some of the departments within the county. Don't forget to like our videos and subscribe to the channel.